If everybody could just take their seats, we're going to call the meeting to order. We're a little bit behind, it's about 7:08. First of all, I want to thank you all for coming tonight. It's good to see so many people at a school board meeting. Tonight, we're here tonight, this is our, the fourth time the Board has had a chance to look at the budget. It's been quite a process. We've been throwing some curveballs in there with the equalized pupil count and some of the other things. And we've gone back to our administration a couple of different times now to ask them to take a look at how we can keep this budget, you know, without deleting to the opportunities, how we can keep this to be a fiscally responsible budget. So the format for tonight's meeting, we will, we have a speaker sign-in list here. I'll let you know who's speaking and who's going to be speaking next. Please only speak when you've been recognized by the Chair. Please try and contain your remarks to two minutes. We will be timing you and cutting you off because there are so many people here and we want to try and give as many... No, I didn't bring my phone, it doesn't work here. So we want to give as many people a chance to speak as possible. We've allowed an hour for this, we may extend it a little bit, but we're not going to go forever. We will have the microphone on the stand there in just a minute, so when it is your turn to speak, please come up to the microphone and address your remarks to the Chair. Sure. Please, when you do speak, introduce yourself and say what town you're from, okay? All right. Thank you. Nika Oaks is first, and on deck is Amber Casares. The Board hasn't had, the Board doesn't have, has not heard about the new cuts as well. You know, right now, we're looking at, we had gone back and asked the administration to prepare what it would look like to be below the double taxation, the penalty taxation threshold. As I understand it, that's another 49,000? We have not discussed what those cuts entail. We figured we would hear from the public first and then we would go, and then we would, the Board will hear about those cuts, you'll hear about those cuts, and then we'll discuss it. Joe? Yeah? I'm sorry. Would it be possible in less than five minutes to give exactly what the problem is and exactly what you're trying to solve, so that all of us here who may be not well informed can then be in sync with what you're thinking about? Is that possible? Yes. Lori, can you do it in five minutes? You can do three? Here, take the mic.
Okay. So what's been happening over the years is that your equalized pupil has been going down and down. And that's a statewide trend, as everybody has, this is not news, shouldn't be news to anybody, in Vermont, basically. So when that happens, when your budget stays the same, or your budget increases by a percent or two, then you're widening that gap. Well then, Act 46 comes into play. And what happened this year is, there is always a cap called Hold Harmless. It's 3.5%, which you could never drop below 3.5%. But what that did is created phantom students. This year, you are allowed to drop 10%. So that's why there's such a huge drop in the equalized pupil, like 20, right? I think that's the number? So we normally do not see this happening. Maybe three, four per year? I'm sorry, it's a pre-12. Yes, which is a pre-K 12 issue. Because it's, the equalized pupils are taken from ADM, it's two-year average, and then it's weighted through a bunch of different weighting, and that's when you see this start to drop. So, in a really quick, less than five minutes, that's where we're at right now. We came in with a budget, this year in particular, and it was about 3.5% up. At that point, Bob was asked to make a reduction of about 300,000. We got it to 323,000, to bring it closer to the cap. The next equalized pupil numbers came in, it was down again. So, so this is what's been happening this year in particular.
I'm sorry, just wanted to clarify a question. I don't understand your ADM, would you please?
Sure. Average daily membership. Every November, the schools take a census, okay? And that number is then combined with the previous year's number to create a two-year average, which then goes through the calculations and creates an equalized pupil.
Question?
Well, it's not a question. I'm thinking maybe a little discussion or clarification about what the threshold is. The threshold is...
It's not Act 46.
No, but that's impacting what we may cut. You're welcome.
So the threshold is a number that comes from the Tax Commissioner that says, this is what we're going to allow a pupil cost to be. We don't want anything above that. So that's where the threshold comes from. And that's where we're above the threshold now. Currently, that threshold is $17,386.
Clarifying question?
Yes. Have Bob's cuts already been voted on?
And are these the cuts that people are curious about?
Nothing has been voted on.
Nothing. So, could he mention those cuts? What are proposed?
Those were posted up on the Wednesday.
Those have been posted for a while. We, can we do a quick summary, Bob, of what you've done?
So the reductions, as of right now, include the equivalent of one FTE, which is a combined English-French in literacy coach position. It includes, the most recent round was a 1.0 FTE science teacher. It included a co-curricular reduction in the sports program for snowboarding team. It included a .83 reduction in the music program, bringing it down to 1.0 from 1.83. A series of other non-staff related reductions in textbooks, equipment, supplies, other things like that. And then, the reduction that I was asked to bring to this meeting, to take care of whatever was left, to get below the threshold from where we got it in the last meeting, is a 1.0 co-op teacher position at the school.
Thanks. Okay, so I don't think I need the microphone anymore. We can now go move on to the public comment section. First is Nika and Amber.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I think it would be very helpful if the school board members could introduce themselves and the towns that they're from before we start addressing you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Everything should be addressed to me as Chair. I'm Joe Winrich, I'm from Towns.
Howard Iris from Wyndham.
Bauman Madavi from Newfane.
Jeremy Callaway from Newfane.
Hallie DeColly from Townsend.
Donald Schmitt from Townsend.
Emily Long from Newfane.
Kelly Warner from Newfane.
Twyla Holden from Townsend.
Patty Dixon from Jamaica.
Paul T. Will Prinsman.
Laurie Garland, Intern Business Manager.
And Bill Anton, Superintendent.
Thank you so much.
Nika, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Amber, your ready.
Good evening. Sorry to those who are looking at my back. My name is Nika Oaks, and I teach co-op education at Leland and Gray. For those of you who do not know me, I began my career at Leland and Gray four years ago in the planning room. I was a class advisor for two years, and I've been a yearbook editor for the past three years, as well as the co-op teacher. I have a master's degree in school counseling with a focus on career counseling, and I'm a resident of Westminster. I want to make you aware, before you take a vote, of the topics that are covered in the co-op education program. And among other topics, students in my co-op class will learn the following, so I have a list for you. Personal goal setting, budgeting, opening a bank account, obtaining a credit card, obtaining a loan, creating a business plan, Miranda writes, writing a resume, deciding what career is right for them, polishing their online persona, defining success for each student, what to wear for an interview or at your job, how to answer interview questions, applying for college, college research based on each student's personal interests, job searches, assistance with obtaining a job after graduation, the meaning of blue and white collar jobs and how they are interconnected, learning the roles and expectations of the boss, workers' compensation, OSHA job safety, the pros and cons of unions, fast fashion and its impact on the world's economy, environment, and workers' rights, customer service, first impressions in the workplace, planning for parenthood, renters' insurance, renting and buying a home, meal plans, budgeting for a baby, sexually transmitted diseases, moving out of your parents' house, credit scores, unemployment statistics, starting a business, successful people in our community, recognizing identity theft, the Better Business Bureau, the Fair Housing Act, writing business letters, letters of recommendation, letters of interest, developing a website, and technology integration in the workplace, among other things. As a teacher, I provide individual support services and facilitate the development of activities related to career awareness, exploration, and preparation. I match and place students in appropriate workplace settings that meet the learning style of each individual person. I background check each mentor and closely monitor mentor and student interactions.
Next, here's two minutes, can you please drop up?
Sure. I am asking you guys to consider keeping this program, because it directly is connected to personal learning plans and project-based graduation requirements, which we all know are very important. And if we're looking to attract students to our school in the future, I think this is the way to go. It's learning outside of a typical classroom. Thank you for your time.
I'm Amber Casares, and I'm here on behalf of Senior Vivek Anderson. Dear School Board, ever since I transferred to this school in 2013, I have been disappointed in the lack of classes Leland and Gray has to offer. A couple of years ago, when co-op was established, it has given students a chance to go beyond what the school has to offer and experience what it actually is like to work the jobs that you are interested in. The first semester I had co-op, I would go over to the elementary school and I would help the teachers in showing the kids how to read books and how to write letters to other people, and so on. It was a great experience that I had, that I had, and would not have, it would not have been possible without the co-op class. A lot of people say that schools don't teach important things like how to balance check books, or how to write resumes, or get insurance. Well, thanks to co-op, we now have a class that teaches us all that, and more, like how to establish good credit and what rights we have as workers in the workplace, and how to get an apartment. I have taken this class four times now, and I learn something new every time I take it, and I hope future students will still be given the opportunity to experience co-op. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hannah Hart, and I'm reading this on behalf of Sue Jones. I stand before you again, similar to last year, in support of yet another valuable course that is potentially being eliminated at Leland and Gray. Last year, I spoke to you about the need for consumer science being a required class for all graduates. When I was a student here, we were required to take senior survival with Charlie Merchant. This class taught us valuable life skills that many, those of us that took the class, would agree is what they remember and use most of all the classes we took in school. Today, I've come to you to support, in support of co-op. What a disservice we will be doing to our students if co-op is eliminated. This, like consumer science, is a class that prepares students for the world of work and life after LNG. While their students are college-bound or directly entering the workforce after high school, the skills they learn in co-op will be what they remember and put to use when they leave LNG. Unfortunately, the elective classes are always the first to be eliminated, when we are in a hard budget times. Well, I am not pointing fingers, and I understand we need to look at total per pupil cost. How much does it cost to have only a few students in an AP class versus 40 to 50 students that co-op services per year? In two or even 22 years, the students will not remember what their test scores were on any of the standardized tests they took through the years here. They will remember the job readiness and transferable skills, like responsibility, getting to work on time, interpersonal skills, and other transferable skills like they learned in co-op. They'll remember learning about OSHA, the Fair Housing Act, creating a business plan, Miranda writes, writing resume, the meaning of blue and white collar jobs, the Better Business Bureau, Rotary, and other service organizations, writing business letters and other important lessons that they learned through participation and are going to their internship. Other than consumer science, what other classes are these topics taught? As a taxpayer and a voter in the town of Newfane, I am willing to have my taxes increased for the comfort of knowing that this information and life experience are being taught.
My name is Tino Benson. I'm from West Townsend, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Snowboard Team Program. I can say for certain that the removal of the Snowboard Team would be a huge disservice to the students involved in the program. Many of them, my brother included, look to snowboarding as their only extracurricular activity for the year. Without it, they would miss out on the important opportunities to participate firsthand in a team sport and learn valuable life skills that they would certainly carry with them to college, their job, or wherever else life leaves them. It's an opportunity as well for Leland and Gray to be represented by a group of students who feel passionately about what they do. Just as other sports teams and theater productions represent our school in a favorable way, so does the Snowboard Team. I won't be here next year, but many of my peers will, and I know that none of them would want to see such a positive program and opportunity be taken away from them. I would hate to see a group of students unable to reach their potential due to a program being taken away. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jesse Canella, I'm from Jamaica. The removal, and I'm speaking behalf, on behalf of the Middle School Music Program. The removal of the Middle School Music Program would be inefficient to the productivity of the students. Students need an outlet to express themselves. It is self-discovery that cannot be taught in the courses that don't revolve around self-expression. I don't play an instrument, but I do remember when I myself was in middle school chorus. And without it, I don't believe I would have gotten into the college I am in now. I'm an acting major, and it really helped with my social skills and development, and I feel like that is essential for young people to learn about. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christian Paulus, and I live in Wyndham. I'm speaking on behalf of Senior Walker Harmon. I have learned several things in co-op that I do not believe any other class at Leland and Gray can offer. First, I've learned how to apply to, I've learned how to apply to a college, which is very helpful this year. I have learned such skills like opening a bank account, obtaining a loan, obtaining a credit card. I have learned how to properly go into a job interview, and even what union and how important they are. I have learned how to budget, having a child, meal plans, general living necessities for after I graduate from LNG in June. But probably most important thing, I can say I've taken out of this class and my whole co-op experience is my life path. Before I met Nika and started her class, I did not have a clue what I wanted to do with my life. But after she hooked me up with Marty, I realized I wanted to go into that field of work. I believe co-op is one of the most important classes at this school, and by no means should go away anytime soon.
Enjoying MJ Coyne's on deck?
Hi, my name is Terry Davidson-Burger. I currently live in Townsend. For full disclosure, I'm a staff person at Leland and Gray. But I'm here because I care about our students, I care about my colleagues. Most importantly though, I'm a mom. I have a son that will be entering kindergarten. And my husband and I have chose to make the Valley our home for the past 15 years. We're currently house shopping and planning and hoping on staying in the Valley and expanding my husband's business here. I just have a general concern about the direction that education in the Valley is headed. We have the luxury of flexibility, we could choose to live closer to Brattleboro or to Manchester if we wanted to, but we're choosing to stay here. And so, education for our children is obviously important, it should be a priority. I understand nobody wants their taxes raised, I get that, but I think that we have to think of the bigger picture and what would happen to our property values, the quality of living in the Valley if Leland and Gray did not exist and our children were forced to be bus to Brattleboro or to Manchester, and how that impacts the community as a whole. There are many of people my age, like my friend Fiona, that we were just talking, that we chose to live here because of Leland and Gray, because of the quality of education. And I, that's basically it, it's just a general statement. I know we're in a hard position, I'm seeing it, I'm feeling it, but our kids matter and their futures matter. So I just hope that when we're in this process, we consider those of us who choose to live here and want to see Leland and Gray thrive. Thank you.
Hi, my name's MJ Coyne, I live in Jamaica, Vermont. And I'm an alumni at this school. And this used to be the shop class, just a little information there. But the thing I'm wondering about is, it seems like you're picking specific things. You know, I, one thing that crosses my mind is the athletic department, and there's a lot of expenses in that. And I don't know why it's not brought up more than just the Snowboard Team, instead of eliminating the team. You know, I know the coaches get paid some money and all that stuff, you know, thinking outside the box. But I'm very fond of this school, and my daughter is involved in drama and chorus in the middle school. And, you know, I know it benefits her life very much, and I would hate to see those programs go. You know, I was very impressed when my daughter started going to this school, because back in 1989, they didn't have a lot of the programs that they do now. I have another daughter that I'm expecting to come up here in a few years, and I would hate to have to make the decision based on choices that the school has made to place them in another school. You know, and, you know, I would really like to think we could look at other structures through all, the whole school, reducing everywhere, not just certain teachers and other things. So that's what I got to say. Thank you.
Next up is Fiona Reed, seven years old, with Dan Walton on deck.
My name is Fiona, and I'm from Williamsville. And I recently moved to this area. I'm a public school librarian in northern Massachusetts, and our regional school is going through the same thing, where there's, enrollment is declining. And one thing that I really hope that we think about is the diversity of programs is something that attracts people to a school. And one of the reasons I chose to live here was because of the education that's offered here. And we need to think long-term, that if we choose to not have our taxes raised so that there is, and not fund our schools in a way that has a diversity of programs, more people are going to choose not to come to this school. And those are the people that have the economic flexibility to be able to pay for private schools. And that ghettoizes a public school, and it starts to erode communities. And I really hope that we think long-term about how we as a community can support each other and economically support the school long-term to keep people wanting to be here. Thank you.
Dear Dan Walton, I live in Newfane, and I would like to present to the Board your community. These are people who support this school. These are people who know that even if, even in times when nobody's thrilled about paying high taxes, if we are willing to step up to the plate, even pay the penalty, because we know that if we let these draconian cuts go through, it'll be the death knell of our school. Not next year, maybe not the year after, it'll be the end of our school. We are not willing to sacrifice our school because our legislature cannot figure out a really great way to fund schools. They've given it a good try, Act 60, Act 68, we have equitable spending to a point, but when push comes to shove, they don't have enough money, they cut everything, and so little by little, they have to come up with these formulae. And who takes the hit? We do. Our schools do. And what we're saying is, this is a taxpayer's revolt. We are no longer willing to say to you, "Oh, that's too bad, our school's going down the tubes, we just have to bite the bullet." We are not. We are not going to do that. We are going to stand up for our schools. You have a very clear choice. You have, our communities, if you pass this budget without these draconian cuts, I mean, if you can make, by all means, make savings, but if you cut the English teacher, and there's no French, and the music, and the science, and the snowboard, all those, if you cut the programs that people are worried about, you, what, you are siding with a legislature which has become dysfunctional. What we will do for you, if you decide not to do those cuts, you pass a budget that keeps those positions, we, who in this room will help work to pass that budget? We will work and we will help you pass that budget. And if we can't pass that budget, then you'll prove us wrong, you'll have a revote, and you'll be proven wrong. If you decide to make these gigantic cuts, we will also organize to vote that budget down, because we are no longer willing to allow our school to twist in the wind while the legislature gets its act together. I just spoke with Carolyn Partridge tonight, who's a majority leader of the House. She's in complete agreement with what we're trying to do. She says we need to change the structure up there, and people are not willing to make the change. So not only will we work to, okay, not only will we work to pass this budget, we will work with our legislators to get them to really stand up for our schools. We will no longer allow our school to tank.
Hi, I'm Hugh Friedman from South Newfane, and as some of you may know, I served on the Newbrook School Board for seven, eight years, was Chair of the School Board for seven years. So I understand the situation that you're in, and I'm very sympathetic to it. And please don't mistake my passion for aggression. I am not, my feelings are not directed at you personally. I am asking you however, to be courageous and say no to any more deep cuts. We are in a very, very vicious cycle, where enrollment drops, there are more cuts, as many people tonight have mentioned, people with economic means or with resources leave the area, either send their children to public, to private school, or just go to burn burton, and enrollment keeps dropping, and we, we've been in this cycle for years. And I couldn't agree more with Dan, that it's the, I understand firsthand that financial constraints under which the school board operates, there are many factors that are outside of your control in setting the budget. It's the legislature that is not stepping up to the plate. They have kicked this can down the road so many years. And now we're at a point where we are beloved, we're looking at a school and a budget that's going to take a huge hit. I'm the proud parent of two Leland and Gray students. I love this school. I love this community. This community and the school cannot withstand these kind of deep cuts. So I think there are three options. One option, and they're not mutually exclusive. One option is that the school board take a stance, pass a budget that does not include these deep cuts, and join those of us who are going to be organizing after tonight to meet with our legislative delegation, everyone who represents all the sending schools to Leland and Gray. A number of us have already committed to convening an emergency meeting. Second of all, I have voted for every school budget for twenty-four years.
I cede my time to Kim, Dan Sidon. I cede my two minutes to Kim.
I voted for every school budget for twenty-four years. If this budget passes, and I don't mean this as a threat, I'm letting you know where I'm at, because I am, I've had it up to here. I will not support this budget, and I will join Dan and other people in this room to vote the budget down, not to stick it to the school board, but to send a message to the legislature that this is it, we've had it. And we're not going to go, we're not going to feed into this cycle that has no end to it, except for the possibility of either the school closing or becoming so limited in its choices that anyone who wants AP courses aren't going to come here, and anyone who's looking for any kind of enrichment, any kind of athletic program, any kind of music program, anyone who has a choice will go somewhere else. And then lastly, I'd like to say that I feel very strongly that the main message that we all need to send to the legislature is that we need to move from a school funding formula that's pegged very regrettably to the property tax, and move to a much more progressive system of funding our education system through the income tax. The legislature doesn't have the courage to make that move unless they hear from all of us, and I think that needs to be the fundamental message that's sent to legislators, legislators when any of us who are interested in this room and beyond meet with them in the next few weeks. So thank you, Dan, thank you very much. My former colleague on the school board, thank you for the extra time. And I look forward to working with anyone in this room who wants to push the envelope on this topic. And thank you for the school board for this opportunity tonight.
My name is Gerald Julian Cisse. I'm a resident of South Newfane, a voter in the town of Newfane, and I'm a Spanish and English as a second language teacher here at Leland and Gray. I would like to just add a little bit more, because much of what I would have said has been said, but I would like to have the dollars and cents figured out, what would it mean for our taxes, so that the voters can make a decision. They hear this grand total of, "Oh, we have to cut three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, we're way over budget, our seventeen thousand and change cap, we're way over it, we're going to be punished by having to pay this fine or a penalty." Let us know, what does it cost each of us as taxpayers? Will it cost us all an extra thirty-five, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars? Let us make that decision in dollars and cents. I think that helps us all understand the values of our education versus when the school is dismantled bit by bit by bit, then our, as someone else has already mentioned, property taxes will, property values will go down. It might cost us a hundred, two hundred, three hundred more in taxes versus the tens of thousands of dollars our property values will reduce. And trying to sell your home or bring families into this community will just not happen. So I would like to say, before it's put to the voters, if whatever budget is decided upon tonight, what would any, if we did not make these cuts, what would that amount of money mean in taxpayer dollars per year? I just want to make one other clarification, and that was when you mentioned that the coaches, it was a math and an English and French coach. We don't have a French coach. But what would happen is the French program would just kind of disappear, because the two people who are currently teaching it, one is not coming back, one is waiting to hear about a sabbatical, but nothing has been put into the budget to continue the French program. So I'm concerned that it just disappears. Thank you.
Is it, does it say Cabral? I apologize for not writing in script.
Buckelto, Newfane, formerly of Townsend. And in two years, I will have been a graduate alumni at Leland and Gray for sixty years. Looking around, I may be the oldest person in this room who scored a basket in this year. That aside, I'm gonna take a little different tack. I'm curious as to the board, well, first of all, I spent fourteen years in administration in an academic department and an extension at the University of Vermont, so I have some ideas about building and what you have to go through to construct a budget for operating an academic program. And I don't like the aspect of budget cutting, and this sounds like what has been an exercise for the board in terms of determining what we're going to cut. I like, my preference is to build a budget every year, or whenever you have to present a new budget, to start from zero. And you lay out what the absolute needs are in order to graduate students that will meet, have the adequate preparation for continuing their education, for going into the workforce, for being active and productive citizens in the community. So start from ground zero and build what is absolutely needed. Having a greater, as great a diversity as you can is important. And let me tell you that the diversity that this school has is a little bit different than it had in nineteen fifty-eight. So, but then two times have changed, and a number of, many different opportunities have arisen in which develop needs for students. So take a look at what the students need, bottom line, build those into your budget, and then start adding to make the diversity, to make it an attractive institution for our students and for the people in the towns in this valley. And financially responsible. Thank you.
My name is Cabral, and I'm Philip Sidon from Newfane. I'll be speaking on behalf of the music department. I suppose I'll start off with, ever since I was in elementary school, I always looked on music programs as something kind of to look, not kind of, definitely, to look forward to, and I always wanted to aspire to be that, because growing up, I always loved music and not just kind of, you know, a hobby thing, but it helped me kind of think about, it helped me connect with different subjects in school, like English, science, et cetera, et cetera. And so, when I finally got into this music course, you know, back in elementary school, I thought, "Hm, this is interesting, I think I'm going to work at it." And then by the time I got into seventh grade, working with Ron Kelly, I realized I, by the beginning of seventh grade, just to the end of seventh grade, I had grown not just as a musician, as a personal aspect, but as, but from an academic aspect, working with everyone else in the band, because that musical knowledge helped me, it has proven scientifically that it helps brain growth, and it definitely helped me connect, it helped me work on my studies, it helped me connect with things that otherwise, you know, in your personal relationships, that I wouldn't have done if I didn't have music. And continuing with that, the music courses have seventh graders working with eighth graders, eighth graders working with tenth graders, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There is more, there is different, only in a music course would you have an upperclassman work, not just talking to, but working with on a music piece in a band, in a group, with the same person. And to a middle schooler coming in, being afraid of the big bad upperclassmen, being afraid of the big bad seniors, that is absolutely valuable. Because it helps them not only get comfortable in the school, but also helps them later on to not be so afraid, to help take chances, to help be more gregarious, and help say, not just being afraid of people, saying, "Hello, how are you? My name is et cetera." That's the end of my time. So I will end with that. I beg of you to please reconsider the budget cuts proposed, because for me and many others, no music, no life. And I dearly hope that the music department and the school does not end up like Tower Records. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Joseph, and I'm from Jamaica, and I'm speaking for the French program. I've come up with a list of reasons on why the French program is important. It's really important to a lot of students in my class, and we've been talking about this. We live so, our state is so close to the border of Canada, that French is a really important language to know. Also, what about the, like, some upperclassmen like myself have already been taking French? And I know that if the French program is cut, I wouldn't have time to go back and start a new language and finish it. And the others, some other students don't want to, like, stop taking French and start over with younger classmen that are typically harder to work with. And knowing about cultures and languages, that really helps people become more sensitive to the world around them and more knowledgeable. And colleges look for language credits. So why would you take away a program that would help students get into college? And thirty-two students would be just cut off from French, right there, no continuation. And what about the students that are looking forward to going into French the next year? And then they get here and they realize there's no French. And there are over two hundred twenty million French speakers worldwide, including seventy-two million so-called partial French speakers. And I got that fact from Diplomat.gov. And so, as a second-year French student, I really feel like you're saying that our language isn't as important as the others. And I think all languages are equal. So, thank you.
I'm Trish Coyne, I'm from Newfane, and I'm a parent of an eighth grader here at Leland and Gray. I wanted to echo what a couple of other speakers have already said about the overall process of budget cutting in general, standing up to the legislature, taking a stand, preserving the school for the good of the community, preserving property values going forward. A lot of people in this community, and over the twenty years that I've lived in this town, I've watched this school change. I've watched a lot of people over the years put a lot of investment and energy personally and professionally into Leland and Gray to transform it from a school that did not have a lot of the advantages and a lot of the extracurriculars, and the theater department, and the music department, and so many things about Leland and Gray are so stellar and have been acknowledged, you know, nationally acknowledged. And I am just as concerned as I know all of us are, that these cuts will, you know, not only strip those pieces of progress away from our school, but also slowly erode the future of this school and the future of the, the future of the students in this valley. I do see that, as others have mentioned, that people that have the means would take their children to private schools, they would go to Vermont Academy, they would go to Putney, they would go to other places, and it just, it's just a recipe for absolute disaster. And I really, really would encourage the board to take that stand. Please be brave and know that this community has, is here to stand up and say that we will certainly support this school. And I know as a taxpayer, that is my preference. I have another child that I will be wanting to put through Leland and Gray as the Leland and Gray that it is right now, not a Leland and Gray that has been stripped. Thank you.
All right, so I'm, I'm pretty bad at this. My name is Emily Oberholzer. I'm a staff member at Leland and Gray. I'm a little worried, the look on some of your faces that looks sort of like it's a done deal, that scares the heck out of me. So I hope you guys are all really hearing us tonight. It is ponderous to me that music and languages get cut. When you teach music, it happens so often, when you teach music, you're teaching both a pragmatic skill and abstract thinking at the same time. It is the same when you are teaching language to students. Why any board would, or any budget development would include cutting both languages and music at the same time is really mysterious. It's a way of actually, you end up taking a lot of power away from your students, because they're not going to learn to think abstractly, and you're taking away a sort of safety net for both learning pragmatically, pragmatically as well as abstractly. If you are interested in keeping students in school, co-op is a deterrent to dropping out. If you are interested in offering pragmatic skills to both college and work-bound students, if you are interested in keeping students here, keep co-op and keep music and take my taxes. We are not pupil counts, we're not RIS, ADMs, or equalized counts. We are this community, and we are here in support of these programs. Please think about this differently. You have all of our inspiration to do so. Thank you.
My name's Dale Stevens, I'm from Newfane. Most of the things I wanted to talk about have already been addressed here, but I would like to bring up a couple of points, and I would like to speak to not my lovely daughters that are here tonight, but their family that may someday want to move back to this family, back to this valley, once they move away, go to school, and decide they want to raise their children in the same environment that they have had the opportunity to do here. I really believe that we now have in place at the school a team of people that could possibly turn this school around and not just save this school, but actually put it on a course that will make this school a, a school where I think the future generations may actually decide to come to this valley and find the lifestyle that we have grown to like ourselves here. I really believe that, given the opportunity, I think you could see wonderful things happen here. We did not throw a dart at a dartboard and decide this was where we wanted to go. We actually looked very carefully at schools in Vermont, and we chose this school because of the programs that were available to them. And my concern is, is if we start selling off the crown jewels, as I like to call them here, the school is just going to be another high school. And that is not going to be attractive to other people that want to come here. I would like to see that be the opposite. I would like to see the school be a school of choice, a place where, a destination. That's all I have, actually. Thank you.
I'm Pat Hallard from Newfane. I just was signing anything Gerald put in front of me as I walked in, so I'm kind of accidentally up here. However, I am the very proud parent of three Leland and Gray graduates, who probably developed courage, skills, and the ability to launch into the world from this place. They approached Leland and Gray very differently. They are all gainfully employed at this point, and not living with me. They pay their taxes and they give back to their community. I... I would say that at this point, there is no more important time to support our youth and public education. And I understand your job's a hard one, but please listen to this good group. Thank you.
I really have nothing new to add to what's been said, except that thinking back to my own academic career in high school, which was pretty miserable. It was the things that were not the academics that I was able to excel at, the arts programs, uh, music programs, theater programs. Um, I gained recognition, I gained strength, I gained confidence. And somehow or other, I feel like that has helped me as I have sort of stumbled through life. I think the students that have spoken this evening are the ones that you should be listening to because there's been such a diversity of, of expression. And, uh, and, uh, they have expressed well what Leland and Gray has meant to them. So I would just hope that somehow, I don't understand all of the economics of this. I certainly do understand how somebody presented it, that if my taxes were to go up, I would be more than happy. We have two children that attended school here, they did phenomenally well. And they are both, well, actually, our son's on the couch this evening. But he's, he's just visiting. So I would implore you to, um, do whatever you can do in looking at this conundrum of monies and programs and, and come to some resolution that can continue to have this school be the wonderful place that I know it to be.
Sandy Judd, I'm from Townsend. Um, I just want to say that, uh, if this is really the budget that you're going to put before the voters, then, you know, you've effectively taken my vote away. Because what, what you're telling me is, okay, you can drink this vial of deadly poison that we're giving you. And if you don't, then we'll give you this other vial of deadly poison that's going to kill you faster. And that's what I feel like this choice is. So if you would just give the first version of the budget a chance, let us vote on it. And if the community really doesn't support it, really hates taxes out much, then so be it. But at least give us a chance to vote on it, okay? Thank you.
Uh, Steven Meyer from Newfane. I am the father of a class of two thousand eighteen student and the son of a graduate of the class of nineteen forty-nine. So three generations are, um, represented right here. And I was here in the late seventies when we did a budget cut very similar to this. And from the outside community, it seems sort of easy. But when you're a student in this school, or maybe a teacher, it really sucks the soul out of the place. And what Kim referred to as the downward spiral is real. It really is real. Um, I'm committed, I'm here to stay, and my family is. But a lot of people do leave. And, um, contrary to what you may think, when people leave, the budget doesn't go down. It actually goes up, as you're, you're well aware. I'm not envious of your position whatsoever. But, um, in seventy-six or seventy-seven, I was at a school board meeting much smaller than this, and they denied us the ski team, um, budget. And you know what, I still remember that, you know, forty years later. I can't say it hurts, but it's, there's some resentment there. Um, and it was tough, and it sucked the soul out of the place. I have nieces and nephews that go to three of the largest schools in Vermont, and they kind of giggle at, at Leland and Gray. Oh, you know, you guys aren't a real team, you're not a real school. Um, this, things like the snowboard team, they do well. It really adds a lot of spirit to the school. And I'm just here to ask you to, please don't suck it out of the, the students, don't suck it out of the school. Um, you have a tough choice ahead of you, but, um, I'm really, you know, I'm, I'm proud of the, the heart and soul I've seen here tonight. Thanks.
Uh, Beth McDonald, I'm from Vermont. Um, I came here specifically because of the snowboard team, two thousand sixteen state champions. You guys, you see that banner? You guys have it hanging over in the gym. So might be something to consider. Especially when we, um, celebrate our GIST program and putting our kids out on the mountain from a young age. Um, and we live in a state where our economy very much depends on the mountains, um, out of all the sports. And I've enjoyed watching all of them. I, you know, a lot of the athletes, um, I don't imagine too many of the other sports sending people into the pros. But I do see the snowboarders and the skiers finding viable work in this state. And so it just seems like a, a short-sighted cut. Um, as, and I'm, I'm not interested in any of the cuts. I only found out about Nika tonight. Um, I do have a relationship with Nika through Meadows B. Farm in Wyndham. I've met a number of the students, um, through there. And one of the things that I would ask you to think about, and it's a relation between the co-op and sports and, and music and theater, these things draw your community to you. If you continue to cut our connection with our kids through extracurricular activities or sending them out into the community to work with us, um, you're, you're going to end up standing alone. So I hope you reconsider all of these cuts. Um, and I'm totally with Kim and Dan. The problem is it shouldn't be put on the backs of these kids. The problem is up north, and that's where things need to change. Don't, don't put the burden of education on the backs of our students.
Hi, my name is Kathy Stone, I'm from Wyndham. Um, I would like to ask the school board to stand with your community and support your community and not Act Forty-Six and the legislature and their per pupil equalization problems. Stand with your community, let them speak about the budget, be strong for them, and let us all work together, not school board against community, but community and school board to change the way things are done up north. Per pupil equalization funding is possible, other than through taxes. You can, we can work together as a community to bridge that gap. But first, we have to be honest enough to recognize they're bullying you, and in the, in turn, you're bullying your community. We have to stop that. Don't we have a no-bullying policy, I think, in most?
Um, I'm Morgan from Warthrow. I formally just graduated from Leland and Gray. And I'm talking for co-op. Uh, here I am, graduated, and I've taken almost everything I've learned from co-op with me. To getting a job, to looking for schools I want to go to, to even knowing what to say or what to wear, like, there's just, I wouldn't be as far as I am if I didn't take the class. And like, I have family and friends that are still in the school that, you know, would be really unfortunate for them to miss out on how to do this thing, how to graduate, you know, what's next in life. I don't know. I really hope you guys don't take it away. That's all I say. Hello. Um, so I'm graduating this year, so I'm still going to be with Nika and the co-op program. But, um, if you take that away, what are they going to do? However, there's no other program that teaches you, you know, how to apply to colleges or help you go places, um, or what to do for a job, you know? You can't just sweep that all away. And no one's going to know what to do, or, and I don't think that's very fair for everyone else that's going to come and go to the co-op.
Hi, my apologies, it's Marsha Wells, and I can't write. Um, first and foremost, I'm very full of emotion tonight. And I'd like to say that I'm a proud parent of two students who went to Leland, Leland and Gray during a time when I felt it was at its utmost, um, high point, focal time. I had, the band was at its best point, um, foreign language was well in stride, drama, sports. It was a, a place to really be proud of. I'm still proud of Leland and Gray. I also want to say that for, I don't know, I don't want to say how many years, but for over thirty years, I've been also the daytime mother of many children here. I teach fourth grade at New Brook Elementary School. And, um, I just want to make sure that we together solve this problem the best way for the kids that are going to school here. And I think together, we can make, uh, it possible to keep what we do have. And I'm really proud of everyone who's here tonight. And it's kind of very nostalgic, but this is a great group of people. And let's just work together and solve this the way it should be solved. Thanks.
Thank you. David Parker from Brookline. Uh, I should add that I also spent twenty-three years of my life, until a couple of years ago, um, teaching third and fourth grade at the New Brook Elementary School. It really saddens me to have to be here tonight to have this conversation. And I'm not going to, most other people who have spoken have shared many of my thoughts. Uh, one thing that nobody has mentioned is that you made a really great hire last year in hiring a new principal, Bob Tebow. And I, I kind of feel, at this point, having this conversation is like offering him a chair and then kicking the legs out from underneath that chair. In order for Bob and the school to be successful, you've got to give him the tools to do that. And looking at budget cuts of this magnitude, deep, deep cuts, and in places that worry me. My daughter graduated from Leland and Gray in nineteen ninety-nine. The music program here was the centerpiece of her life from seventh grade to twelfth. It made a difference. Uh, cutting science teachers at this point in time, when math and science are incredibly important, is not doing anybody a service. Language programs being cut, it's just, it's short-sighted and for reasons that many other people here this evening have stated. I won't waste your time repeating this. I agree completely with the emphasis being on Montpelier, starting in the mid-nineteen nineties, uh, with different acts and funding formulas. Things have become so complicated now that very few people understand, can even begin to understand how this, uh, number is arrived at each year. It's too complicated, it doesn't work, and I hope you do the right thing and let us vote on the real budget and go from there. Thank you.
Uh, Nastia Stevens is after fellow.
Hi, my name is Caroline. I am a freshman here at Leland and Gray. And I am a very involved student in the music department. So, um, music is a huge part of my life and many other students here. And if it were to be cut, a lot of people would feel lost and not know how to deal with their emotions. I mean, speaking for myself, I, the only thing I look forward to during the day is going to music class, going to band, going to chorus, having a band lesson, learning something new. And if band lessons are cut, if music classes are cut, what are we going to, like, how are we going to learn? Um, like, I have never met someone who knows about Leland and Gray and doesn't like the music department. They always compliment our style and, even though we are a small group, we are very talented and everyone loves it. So that's really all I have to say.
My master's Dean is, I'm from Newfane. And I'm just involved in everything. Um, like my father said, we moved here four years ago. Because of the school, we moved to Newfane. And you guys have so much to offer, and I've done everything, oh, close to it. I am part of the theater, the music. Um, I love doing after-school activities, but I'm speaking on behalf of co-op today. I started co-op just this year because I wanted to see what it would be like to work in the real world. Within the first week, Nika has been so helpful getting me an internship at the hospital's kitchen. I have learned so much about how the kitchen works on a professional level. As well as, as well as learning, um, to work in our interest, uh, careers, Nika teaches us about real-life situations. We learn everything from how to write a resume to balancing a monthly, a monthly budget. I believe this is one of the few classes that prepares us for the life after high school. I would hate to see the, the co-op being cut. And if it does, I think it would take a step in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Uh, Deidre Beatty, Townsend. Um, and a lot of what I wanted to say has been already said. Um, just a little history. My mother graduated here, her siblings graduated here. I graduated here, my brother, my husband, and all of his siblings. And we have had two children in the last four years graduating here. I have another son who will be coming here next year. Um, both of my kids were in the top ten of their class. They did co-op, they played three sports, both. They took AP, they were involved in drama. My little son took four years of French. I'm scared for the future of Leland and Gray. And I have to say, if someone like me, who has a tie to Leland and Gray, like I do, is contemplating, I don't know if I want my next son to come here because I'm scared of what we're going to be able to offer him. So Pete, uh, I guess that's what my main concern is. If people like me with these huge ties are like, I'm ready to look elsewhere, that's scary. Because, you know, other people in this room don't have those ties to this community. Um, my other, like, real concern is that this is a time, and I feel the same way as someone else said, with Mr. Tebow coming on, I was like, all right, this is great, we're going to build our school up. And I feel like we're just tearing it down. Um, Mr. Meyer said something that I was going to say. And that's the morale in our school, between the teachers and the children. If they feel like they're on a sinking ship, how do they learn? You know, how do you come to school every day and get these children excited to learn? If you're like... If you're like, "Am I gonna have a job?" You know, "What are we doing?" Um, so yeah, like everybody else, I think we need to send a message to the people sitting up there in the office, from those of us down here in the trenches, and say, "No, we wanna take our schools back."
Hi, my name is Luella Strattner and I just moved to Newfane in September. I have a one-year-old baby waiting at home for me. And I'm here because I want there to be a school here for him in, you know, ten years, eleven years. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Anderson and I'm from Wordsboro. The past three years, I haven't bothered coming to any of the board meetings because we're a sending town, we're not a voting town. And I always felt that we didn't have a voice. At this point, I feel, and I've spoken to several other people in our town, we all feel that we do have a voice. And our voice is that as a sending to a town, we have the choices to whether or not we send our children here. Your budgets will change if you lose our students. And, um, for me personally, my daughter, when she came to 7th grade, we spent a lot of time looking into all of our options, including out-of-state private schools. We chose Leland and Gray because it offered her everything that she wanted to have and it gave her the opportunity to build a community as well, which if we sent her to a boarding school, she would not have a local community. I think that it's very important that, um, the board understands not only the viability of the school depends on the voting members, but the sending towns. And that viability of the school is really about making sure that all of the students' needs are met. We live in a state where people are leaving left and right because there's, jobs are hard to find here. Um, there's, you know, taxes are really high. We need to encourage our students to wanna build communities here and stay in our state to keep our communities viable. By destroying our local schools, what we do is we send our kids off to other communities. They no longer have attachments to our community. It's very easy for them to leave and never come back. Um, I also wanna impress upon the board that I came from a town where my graduating class in, in my senior year, so my graduating class through all of middle school and high school, was three hundred and fifty-seven kids. I grew up in a very small town like Wordsboro. When we moved into middle school and high school, I was too uncomfortable to be able to stretch beyond my boundaries of what I had available to me in my small school. We didn't even have sports or music or anything else available to us. So, I never took the opportunity to get involved in music or sports or anything. And I absolutely regret that. So, you have such a fantastic thing here, having the availability of community for all of our students and all of these options for these different students to be able to do what works for them. We have to remember, I'm sorry, I'll be real quick. We have to remember that not only is our education important, but we live in a community where for our students, the ability to have co-op, this gives them skills, life skills, so that they can go out into the workforce if they don't wanna go to college. Music, it, it's a study and it's proven that music helps students learn. It helps adults in their work, it creates responsibility. And these are things we can't afford to lose in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tristam Johnson, Newfane. I'd like to build on what Bucky said, I have three points I'd like to make. One is that if you start with a, with zero budget, what you're managing for are the mission and goals and objectives of what you exist for. What the school exists for is building the most talented, most capable, best critical thinkers it can possibly produce. If you don't focus on that outcome, then you are missing your objectives. The, what I've heard from the kids here tonight is that many of them are really engaged, really motivated, and they're on the verge of being able to leave with those skills. By chopping these pieces, I have no idea whether you've left anything left for them to live on. Uh, you're create, trying to create a really well-rounded kid. If you start cutting the spokes of that well-rounded image, pretty soon it collapses. Uh, a second point I wanted to make, as somebody who's studied six different languages, I can't tell you how important it has been in helping me feel humbled and able to listen and understand what people are trying to say to be able to relate to others. I can't tell you how important languages are in this particular world, particularly with the individual we have leading this nation. My final point is, um, the pieces, you, the strategy you're using to cut the budget seems to be grabbing at low-hanging fruit. And it doesn't have any coherence to me. I don't understand how it all fits together. And I also don't understand where the administrative side is, is playing a part in helping to meet this budget need. It seems to me all of us as adults have developed our skills, our professions, our trajectory, our paths. We have our, our routine to live and we have a future to look forward to. The kids haven't started yet, that's where the money should go. That's where the comp, short-term compromises should happen in the school system to put the money where the kids need it so they can leave capable to pursue their own path. Thank you very much.
Followed by Rebecca Hall.
My name is Penny Turk and I live in Newfane. And in disclosure, I'm married to Dale Stevens. And when Dale retired from the airline, we literally could move anywhere in the country we wanted to go and we chose to come back to Vermont. We started at the northern part of the state, looking around at schools. That's where everyone we know in Vermont lives. We lived in the greater Burlington area for fifteen years and chose Leland and Gray, not southern Vermont. We're here and I feel like I've been kicked in the gut. We came for the music department, we came for the theater department, we came for the performing arts. And I have to tell you, maybe it's my veterinary medical training where the body systems are all interrelated. But what I think we're missing here, not seeing the forest for the trees, is that these individual cuts are all interconnected. You take out the snowboard team, you have all the other teams wondering, "Are we next?" You take out the music department, which is awesome, and that will affect, that will pull Journey East down into the spiral because the music department is instrumental to Journey East. And I say that as a parent whose kids have not been involved with Journey East. You pull out the music department and the theater department goes down because they perform a music every, musical every year. I think we have to look at the interconnectedness of all of the cuts that we're talking about. We moved here specifically for this school. And I will confess that last night, we were discussing the possibility of renting our house and moving elsewhere. So, thank you.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Hall from West Townsend. I am not a parent, uh, I am a full-time musician. I was asked to come down and speak tonight by some other families in the community. And first of all, I just wanna say that I'm really proud to be a part of this community where people are so passionate about education, about community, about keeping these things alive. I think it's really, really important. Um, I'm also glad that I could speak right after Penny because, um, Ken, my husband and I were down performing in Virginia. And that's where we met Dale and Penny Stevens. And they were, uh, they had just adopted, uh, their two girls, Nastia and Veronica. And they were wondering, you know, "Where are we going to send these girls to school? They have so many talents. They have, uh, musical and drama talent and so much to offer. And the school in our community has nothing." And, and we've said, you know, "We're so proud to, uh, live in West Townsend, Vermont, because we have the school Leland and Gray." And we have gone to so many performances, um, where we've tried to support, uh, our local kids and our community. And we're just so happy that this school exists and that the instructors are so dedicated and have been providing this instruction for children and, um, sending them forth into the world with such great skills. And so I would urge you, please, stand up to the legislature, listen to your community. This is a rich and varied community and people are very passionate about what really matters. And so I would urge you to let us vote on the real budget and not this budget with all of these cuts. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Ken Anderson and, um, I'm the other, the other half of that lady. You know, we are very, um, proud taxpayers in support of this awesome school and very happy to be here tonight. Um, we, uh, so many of our friends and neighbors, their children have, have grown up here and we've watched them. We moved here from New York City in two thousand and three. And we've come to many of, uh, of Ron Kelly's, um, fantastic productions. And, and we've seen them develop and grow over the years. And we've seen his professional staff kind of shrink and wither over the years as well. And I, um, strongly urge that that doesn't continue any further. Um, and for myself, I didn't have the opportunity to come to this school, but, you know, in 6th grade, that's what, you know, we, so many people, um, of our colleagues, musical colleagues and professional musicians, we got our start in our public schools. And most of us did not come from musical families or did not start with private lessons. We started in school. I started in grade six on drums and percussion. Um, in high school, I moved on to, um, chorus and jazz band and concert band and guitar class. And then I did the right thing, whatever, you know, I went to, um, college, went to Columbia and got a degree in political science and worked my way through Brooklyn Law School at night and got my JD and passed the New York State Bar and then became a folk musician. Some might think a lawyer's highest calling, who knows? But, the, the point being is that it stays with you. And for so many of us, where music or the arts are our passion, that doesn't go anywhere. Even if you move on and you discover whatever, the more, the more, what are considered legitimate careers, I don't think they are, but, um, it's, um, it, it, it really stays with you and it has a long-lasting effect. And it has to start in the schools for so many of us who don't have any other means or any other incentive to really wanna discover it. And that's why I have to say, thank you very much for listening.
Hi. I'm Rosa Canela from Jamaica. I have, um, twins, Madison and Jessie, who are now sophomores in college and who have benefited from the music program. Um, and I think that these cuts are not the answer. I don't think raising taxes is the answer either. But short-term, I would prefer to pay higher taxes to keep these programs in place. Uh, long-term, I would glad to join anyone who's gonna go and up to Montpelier and, um, you know, try and find a better solution to this problem that is not going to end. And I have a little boy who is in middle school, who loves the music program and who, um, is also drama program. And without that connection to his, um, uh, fellow students, um, he would not be thriving, um, in school. And I, and I feel that there are a lot of children who would not thrive or make the social connections that they make to be able to, um, feel comfortable and in this learning environment without music program, without the drum program, without the sports, the, uh, they need something other than academics to really have, um, be a rounded student. And these programs cannot be taken away. So, I'm a taxpayer and I would prefer to pay higher taxes than have these cuts. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Um, my name is Madison Canela and I'm an alumni at Leland and Gray. Um, I'm here to kinda give the perspective of a college student at this point. Um, I'm currently attending the third-best architecture school in the nation and I consider that a direct result of the extracurriculars that have been available to me here at Leland and Gray. And many of these are being threatened by budget cuts. Um, the school recently has received recognition for its abundance of opportunity. Why take these opportunities away? My resume was filled with opportunity and I would hate for that to be taken away from my younger brother. If we wish for excellence from the students, we must provide a variety for that. Um, these are some of the things that allow our schools to stand out from all the others, not just locally, but nationally. Um, I come, at the school I go to, I've seen kids from private schools, public schools, and none of them are like the one we have here. And we can talk financially about budget cuts and, um, taxes, but we can also talk about tuition and the scholarship opportunities that can come from these extracurriculars for kids. And then in terms of the co-op, we can talk about kids who might not wanna follow the socially traditional path of going straight to college because there are extra opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you all. I think I just kinda looked at, or, uh, Phil, sort of, Phil's in on, on, uh, what we asked you to do after the last meeting. Um, what does, what does coming under the threshold currently look like for us?
Before she begins, I just wanna say that, um, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. And I wanna just say it was incredible that the, the job that everyone did speaking. But in particular, I wanna just say that I'm incredibly impressed, although not surprised, by the students and the recent one-lag is going. Their eloquence and their passion, uh, and that of their, of their teachers here is what brought me here. So, I just wanted to put that out there, but thank you to the kids.
So, after the last meeting, uh, we looked at draft number three of the budget. And that put us, um, with the new equalized pupil counts, put us about forty-nine thousand dollars over the threshold, or about a hundred and seventy dollars per student. So, Bob was asked, I did not make any changes to that draft three budget. Uh, Bob was asked to look at that further, about, uh, bringing us down to the threshold. So, the other item that I did was look ahead to fiscal year nineteen because that was asked, the board was interested. And it was, um, you know, a lot of work to, to get that through, but I think it really is very, you know, helpful. And I wish, honestly, it was better news. I, I'm sorry to have to deliver the equalized pupil number for fiscal year nineteen, which is seventeen students less than what we currently have. So, this is not the first year of massive cuts that could happen. But really, this is going to continue for the next few years. So, looking at that document that I provided, which is fiscal year nineteen, I have to go back and say, "Where are we going to end up for fiscal year seventeen?" And, you know, as you know, there were people hired after the budget was passed last year that added to a deficit that I feel is going to come in. And these are really rough numbers, I want you all to understand that this is, you know, very rough numbers, but about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar deficit. So, that number has to be, you have to deal with that number over next year. So, if you level funded your budget next year, fiscal year nineteen, and added in the deficit, uh, to make up for that, the stu, the equalized pupil is going to be reduced to somewhere in the two-sixty range. So, that's going to put you, uh, basically about sixteen hundred dollars over the spending threshold. You can see the assumptions that I made with that. Um, I should make assumptions in print. I basically added a percent to the spending threshold to bring that up. Um, so that's another four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that will need to be cut next year if that's to stay under. if that's to stay under the threshold. So I was also asked to look at tax rates. And so that's really very, we're so premature that unfortunately, because Leland and Gray votes so early on their budget, because none of the other towns have voted on a budget yet as well. So in order to get what your actual tax rate is going to be, you have to look at the portion, Jamaica's portion of the tax rate for Leland and Gray plus their local tax rate. And then that is your tax rate or your estimated tax rate. Then you have to add in, or then you have to multiply it by the CLA. But we don't have those numbers till later in the year anyway. So I did a very basic example of what could happen. I used Jamaica as an example, you can see on your sheet here. So based on fiscal year 18, the increases of taxes on a house valued at $200,000 is about $218. So that's looking at the current draft three budget, not the first budget that we presented, which was $6.5 million. Do you have any questions?
I'm confused. Yeah. I'm confused because I mentioned last meeting about the deficit.
So we don't have a deficit that we're bringing into this year?
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
So right now, Leland and Gray has a slight surplus of about $7,000, which is unaudited, ending for fiscal year 16, because that's what we're auditing right now. But for fiscal year 17, which we haven't ended yet, this is a projection now of where I believe you're going to be at in fiscal year 17. At the end of fiscal year 17.
This budget did not take care of the deficit.
Because there isn't a deficit right now. Yeah, it goes forward a year. Does the board have any other questions?
Go ahead, Bob.
This is a very hypothetical exercise. And I know it's very difficult to come up with these projections and estimates. I have a more difficult one to ask you. What would it be like if you ran it using the first budget without the cuts?
Okay. Yeah, so maybe you could talk among yourselves.
Should mention that there's been a lot of sort of commentary, sort of placing blame for the spending on the legislature. Remember, these budgets are driven by the local spending. Each school board decides what it's going to spend and that number goes up there. All the legislature does is come up with the funding formula. It's not like they're telling us we can or can't spend any more or less money. We decide now what we're going to spend. And then that is distributed amongst the state to be the way the money gets raised. But that doesn't necessarily, they're not telling us we can spend less or more.
Do you have more than one mic?
Uh, we don't.
We don't have more than one mic.
I was mentioning that, you know, there's been a lot of commentary blaming the legislature for the funding, for the funding problem. These budgets are local budgets developed by each school across the state. Those numbers are combined, set up to the education fund and then it's, okay, this is how much money we have to raise to run all those schools. There's a funding formula that's based on property tax. And that number then comes down that way. But it's really unfair to blame Montpelier for that problem unless we're talking about just the funding formula itself being broken. Because those numbers come out of the local. We're deciding right now what that number is going to be for us, just as every other school in Vermont is deciding what their local budget is going to be. Patty?
But the threshold thing is theirs. That's, they came up with a threshold.
That came out of Act 68, it's the allowable spending per pupil.
We might develop a threshold locally and say, we're going to double charge ourselves if we go over.
No, the threshold is a legal construct.
Do you have any information?
I guess.
As close as I can get on the fly. Okay, as close as I can get on the fly, on a $200,000 house. And again, it's in Jamaica and using that as an example. And that's if Jamaica takes care of being over the threshold in their own town right now. That would raise the yearly taxes to $460 per year.
Additional.
No, that would be 460. It was 218 before, it would, yeah, increase from what their taxes today. Yes, sorry.
Okay. We still have the, there's another proposal that you were going to bring to us, right? About another cut, perhaps?
So yeah, to reiterate from earlier, the additional, the last meeting, we ended up being charged from the board to come up with what it would take with the new information to get us below the threshold, again, with the updated information. And that is where the co-op reduction came from. So that's the addition for this round. You asked me to come forward with that information. That's the co-op program reduction.
So that's a one FTE co-op?
One FTE, plus some supplies and equipment.
Okay, thank you. We're trying, we figured we'd sort it out and deliberate a little bit amongst ourselves before we just start taking questions from everybody.
There are a number of people here tonight who basically said that they feel like the bigger part of the problem is the legislature. But you just sat there and basically said that we shouldn't be blaming them. And that worries me that, and I hope that everyone on that board heard what we were saying, that we feel like there's a bigger problem. We are trying to put together a budget to provide all these opportunities for our kids, but there does seem to be an issue with Montpelier. A number of people have said that tonight. So I understand what you're, I don't know, I'm not sure I do understand what you're saying because it almost kind of dismiss everything that some of the people said here tonight, that we shouldn't be putting the blame on Montpelier. I think what they're saying is there needs to be a change.
There are proposals all the time to change the way schools are funded. I mean, we're working under Act 46 right now, which is a change in governance, but will also perhaps affect the way schools, our school spending works, you know. And we are working under the constraints that we have right now to get a budget and to run this school. Certainly, anything that's, you know, going to be taken up in Montpelier is not going to save what we're going through right now. Mr. Dole?
What we're saying to you is, we understand this. We are not trying to blame the board. The fact of the matter is, if the Montpelier formula worked, they wouldn't be cutting the budget at the end of the year and then having everybody have to scramble to figure out how to do it. It is an unworkable system. What we're saying to you is, we are going to go out into our communities. We're going to make a hard sell. We're asking people to pony up a couple hundred bucks to buy us time to actually put the pressure on the legislature. Because what the legislature is going to know is, this is a tax revolt. We are no longer going to allow their diller, dallering, whatever the word might be, to prevent us from being able to understand and fully support our schools and the way they're supported economically. So we will do that work with you and we will support you. You said the budgets are local. What we're saying to you is locally, we want to support the school even if it costs us more. If the reality is, that goes out to Montpelier and it comes back to us with a big no, no, no.
It will put a Montpelier with a no.
What comes back is saying, well, we get fined. What we're getting is fined. And so what we're saying, we will take the fine because we don't want to come back when this is finally fixed, which we are determined to fix, and find out that there's nothing left of our school. We've reached that point now. So we are not going to let our school disappear while the fix is in. But we will be part of that fix.
Well, I'd like to say what my thoughts are about the budget. And after the first round of budgeting, I kind of had an idea what I was thinking and I'm still thinking it. And I think I have some support that I feel is strong. I would love to see us bring back the music, make sure we have French. And if possible, the snowboarding, I think that would be great too. I think all of these things are hugely impactful for our school. They define our school. I know they've made a difference for a number of kids I know and mine included. They're very important. I don't even want to think about the co-op thing, that's definitely a no to me. I'd just like to see us bring those things back and then work with the budget that would come from that. That's just how I feel and I'm a strong one.
Thank everybody for coming out here and I think we have to listen to the community. And given the community turnout and the sentiment here, I want to make a motion that we approve the budget as presented last week. That means no cutting of co-op programs that was suggested this week. We approve the budget with the restoration of music, snowboarding and tech ed equipment. That is my motion.
Is there a second?
Snowboarding and what?
Snowboarding, tech ed and music restored.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made to end seconded. So now we would have discussion on that motion before we call for a vote.
So I just want to make a mention about how at the end of the last meeting, or during our last meeting, we had made a decision that we were not going to ask, tell the administration how to apply the cuts. And so that's a decision we decided to, you decided to not go back on. Because we had said we didn't want to tell them how to run the school, that we were going to let them run the school. So you are comfortable with?
Absolutely. We have to listen to the community.
I just wanted to make sure that, because we had decided something different last time.
Oh, if the budget is, how is motion, what's then the total number? So it would be?
So I'll speak for the rest of the amount of classmates that aren't here, couldn't be here tonight. I feel high school is a time where students really figure out what they want to do for the rest of life and what they want to go to college to study for. So cutting these certain programs, we're limiting what students can look at in college and the rest of their life. And is that really what we want to do as a school?
While we're looking at the numbers, I do support this motion of restoring the programs for the kids. And at the last board meeting, there was a lot of discussion about money. And it was brought up that the board isn't really looking at students. And I want to make sure that the public understands that many of us have been sitting in this boardroom talking about Act 46 and what that means for our communities. And the focus has been every single meeting on kids. We talk about the students every chance we get. We're put in a position where we need to have the right sized school with the right programs. We're very fortunate to have a new administration that's working very hard at making sure that we have the right sized school, the right sized programs to meet the needs of our students. It's going to be a very difficult time for education in this area. As we all move forward with Act 46 informational meetings, we look at what the right education system is, the right governance is for our students, there's going to be a lot of difficult decisions. And we do look at the administration for guidance, we look at the public for guidance. And I'd like to say that I appreciate all of the comments, all of the thoughtful statements made by the public and as well as all the consideration by the board and the administration. This is a very difficult decision for everybody as we look at the budget, as we look at programs and as we look at consolidating governance in the future.
I was just wondering about, can you clarify the motion that you made? What would be left in that motion? So are you saying we were asking the community to pay more taxes essentially? You're, I just, you mentioned three things that would be excluded or included. I just wasn't clear on what you were.
I propose that we took the budget that was given to us last week. It had $300,000 in cuts and cut about, restore about $95,000 worth of those cuts. We could still be reducing a science teacher, an assistant principal, a dean and some other miscellaneous expenses, but we would not be losing programs. It would enable us to, you know, keep maintaining programs that we have. I think the community just made it clear that this is what we need to do. You know, we talk about, the state says $17,000 is the ceiling for what we can spend without being penalized. Well, we need to tell the state that we had to spend more. And it's just the way it is. If we cut our, we still, we are cutting our budget because we have less kids and that's just the reality. We have to find some cuts. However, we don't have to be jerked around by the state formulas to, you know, hurt our programs. So that's my proposal, that we still have some cuts. We're still, our budget will still be less, but it won't be so much less that we have to impact our programs. And I think we have to, this is just one, listen to our community.
Kathy?
This goes along with being a sending town, not, this isn't. I'm not interested in putting this in a way of being a threat to the board. But my suggestion to you is to look at the, not just the towns that regularly send to you, but the other sending towns in our area that could potentially be sending here, that have chosen to go to, say, Burn Burton. That ride over that hill is nasty. And the parents that I know whose children go there, they complain about how difficult it is to get their kids that have sports and other programs. If we build a stronger school that has viable competition with Burn Burton and we consider what we need to do as a whole to make these things happen for our future, we could start encouraging other sending towns to move back towards us instead of heading towards other directions. And I think that's something the board needs to really consider. How do you strengthen your school to make that a potential possibility to increase the numbers that you need to help with the budget?
All right, so this, the new budget amount would be $6,307,157. That's what, yep, $6,307,157. That would be the budget you would be voting on, which would add in back the music, tech ed and snowboarding. That would still put you over the threshold even with the exclusions. So you'd probably be in the range, again, with the example, roughly about $306 per year additional taxes.
Would the home office restore?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, I haven't spoken tonight. I've been amazed at what people have said, especially, I've been so impressed by our students. I just, you know, they, this is all on their own volition. I'm just so proud of them. I'm so proud to be here. We're in for a rough ride for several years. Demographic dips, there's nothing we can do. We can't make people go out and have babies. I mean, but, it's a thought, but.
Actually, they're cutting Planned Parenthood.
But they're cutting Planned Parenthood, so there we go. Things are looking up. So. So, um, so, um, no, I'm sorry. So, but, but things go cyclically. Things absolutely go cyclically. This is not the first time in the history of this valley, I'm sure, that we've had a demographic dip. What I want to encourage, and I, I offered this years ago, because before I went into teaching, I was in marketing and PR primarily for nonprofits. And it, I'm not saying I'm the one, I'm saying we need to be totally innovative as a public entity and really beef up a huge PR presence. I mean, we can nickel and dime press releases here and there, but to get some council to say, here's what you need to be doing on a regular basis to boost the image of your school, to counteract some of the, the big-gun schools that are out there waiting for our kids to drop on the side. And I want to say one thing about this school that I am proudest of, and that is that we have the opportunity to nurture relationships with these kids. I'll sit with a kid for 20 minutes during my break and work on his essay with him for, for college. And through that 20 minutes, A, he gets an amazing one-on-one time on his writing. I mean, I don't know, not amazing because of me, but amazing because he's looking at it. He's looking at it and scrutinizing it. And B, we're getting a connection that is just, it's, it's visceral, and it shows that I care about him and that he cares about himself. We are really a school about relationships. When I do theater with the kids, when I teach, when I do honor society, when I see them in the halls, when I have to reprimand some off behavior, it's all about the one-on-one. And we cannot lose that in this valley. It would just break my heart. You'd take the heart out of the valley. That's what you would do. So I think we have to hold on for a rough and rocky ride, put up a little bit more money upfront for the next several years, and encourage our kids to come back and have their families here. And it's, but it's all about PR, guys, it really is. It's image. Sorry.
So I just want to say also, thank you so much for coming tonight. This has been incredibly supportive and helpful, and as many of you know, I went to school here myself, and I've spent a lot of years on this board, and I care very, very deeply about this school and our communities, having grown up here and multi-generations are honored here. There's two points I want to bring up, but the first one is more general, and the second one is sort of common for Bob. So we've been looking at budgets here at Leland and Gray and looking at these charts for as long as I've been on here, and this hasn't changed. We knew this was coming. We, we knew this was coming, and this board, year after year, has sat here in front of our community members and said, we support our kids and our school and our communities. And we have continued to fund all of our programs, because we said our programs are our priority, right behind our kids are our priority. Those were the two priorities. And so we've continued to have this really strong school with really strong programs, and I think it's fantastic, and we saw a great example of that tonight. But I also know that out there in the community, there are working families who are struggling to make ends meet day in and day out, and we have to represent them as well, and some of them may be in this room. And so when we make decisions, if we make a decision tonight to support a budget that is going to go over the spending threshold, for whatever you feel about that, the spending threshold has been there a long time, we've been up against it many, many years in a row, and we've, in fact, sometimes tweaked ourselves just one side or the other of it, but we've always stayed below it. What really nailed us this year is the decline in enrollment across our K-12, pre-K-12 district. And we didn't see it coming. We maybe should have, maybe it was the change in, in the administration at every level, maybe it's just because we were not paying close enough attention, but the fact is phantom students caught up with us, and they're going away, and we need to deal with that. And our chart shows us that we're going to see this until 2020. And I don't know how we're going to get through the next few years without making any cuts. I, I don't know how we're going to do that. The most important thing to me is if we make cuts, and this is just my perspective, this is not the perspective of the board necessarily, but if we, if we don't make cuts now, the cuts are going to be harder and harder to make every single year, because every single year, our numbers are going down. And as a board, as horrible as this feels to me personally, and to every single one of these folks up here, I know, because I've listened to them talk, meeting after meeting, year after year, and none of us, none of us want to make a cut, not only one of us. But if we don't do it this year, next year it gets, it compounds. It just gets bigger, because the numbers continue to go down next year, and now, we just got information tonight, that we are actually going to have a deficit. So here's what I'm worried about. I'm worried about losing Leland and Gray. I'm worried about it going away if we don't fundamentally change what we're doing. I do not want this school to end, and it isn't just my personal perspective, although I got to tell you, there's some personal coming out of this. But I'm really worried about these kids in the valley who need this school. They need this school. And if we can't find a way to make this work, and if we don't change the way we're operating here, we won't be able to make it work. And I feel that very deeply. And we now have an administration, both at the central office and at Leland and Gray, that has the knowledge and skill to do this for us. But we need to get through this year, and we need to get through this year and start working immediately on what our next steps are going to be. Because no matter what we say about the legislature, believe me, I'm there, I agree with every one of you on your concerns about the legislature, I know. But the fact is, Joe did say something that was correct. Spending is the one thing the legislature can't cut at schools. The ed fund has to be funded by taxes, because we're the ones who made the decision locally. We can cut everywhere else. So when we have to make the changes, when you talk up in Mount Hill, you hear us talk about how there's a budget, there's a gap, we call it the alligator mouth, you know? And if our revenues don't match our spending, we have to make cuts at the end of the year. Those never come out of the ed fund, because we don't have the ability to do that. The spending is made, the decision on that is made at a local level. We don't, Mount Hill can't control that. Yes, there's problems with the funding formula, people can't understand it, I understand that. If we go to a income-based formula, the, the formula makes it, the income makes it much more volatile. So we have a recession, for example, a recession like 2008 hits us, the income tax-based funding for education, the money won't be there. And that's one of the reasons why we have this hybrid model that came up through Act 60 and 68 years ago, and it has both the income sensitivity piece, which allows those who can't, who are under a certain level of income, pay based on their income instead of their property taxes, and the rest who can, over a certain level of income, pay more based on, pay their, based on their property taxes. So that's a hybrid model, and it's not, it's not common in this country. It's really not. And it's worked for a long time, but I think we need to look at it again. I believe this year we're going to be looking at it again, we talked about it last year. There's proposals out there to go to the income-based formula, and maybe we will. But no matter how we shift, how we fill that ed fund, it isn't going to change the fundamental problem, and that is that we've lost and are continuing to lose students in this state. And no matter whether we can fix that problem, and as Annie said, maybe people, we can find a way to have people have babies, but that problem isn't going to go away immediately. No matter how we deal with this, we're still going to have a long-term problem here with the decline in enrollment, and we have to address that issue. So if we make the decision to follow Howie's proposal, which, you know, if the board wants to do that, I'm going to support whatever the board wants to do, but I want everyone out there to know that next year, and Lori can tell us the numbers, next year, it's going to be even harder, because we do know the facts, and that is that we're going to have less kids again next year by a lot. So it will take the communities, and I, I think that as all of us are dealing with this right now, we have to be able to answer to everyone that we represent, not just the people that are in the room, as important as the people in the room are, and most especially the kids who we've been hearing, but we will hear from others. I, I know we will, we always do, and so I just want to, you know, bring that up. The last thing I just wanted to say, Bob, it goes back to Howie making those specific cuts. Over the many, many years, we have recognized as a school board that we don't have the ability to run a school. It's not our job to run a school, we shouldn't be running a school. So if there's a $100,000 restoration in, in the budget that Howie's proposing, 93.5 or whatever he's proposing, would you prefer us to just say to you, what is the best, you bring us the best thing that's going to work for the kids as, as an administrator? And I know this is a challenging thing to put in front of you. Or should we just tell you, this is what we want restored? Because Howie picked things that seemed, I guess they were important to Howie, but I have a list of the things that came up tonight, and there were many other things, too. So I'm, I'm not sure how to deal with that. So I can say that, too.
So it's a great question, as the idea of autonomy in running schools is important with the support of the board. My biggest fear coming into this evening, other than having someone start my car for me at the end of the meeting, was that there would be a concern around adding something back without changing the bottom line, and telling me to come up with what the next thing would be, which is dangerous from the perspective, we talked about morale and the spirit and heart, what's happening in the school building. It pits program against program, and staff member against staff member, and kids against kids, and that's a position I absolutely don't want to put in. You're asking me about the ability to take several of the numerous reductions and put them back in without me having to make any other harder decisions about what I'm taking out. Am I understanding that correctly? That's a very different place to be in as an administrator. I'm hearing the community speak, I'm hearing the kids speak, and I think that what Howie has described is, is a, you know, seems to be in the vein of where, of where the support is from the community. So I would say that in this particular situation, I wouldn't say globally that I would want the board to do that, but in this particular situation, I think it works okay. So let me just add one more thing as well. When, when we talk about what the future looks like for Leland and Gray, and I think that's, we all know that there's, at some point, there's going to be something we're going to have to deal with, whether it's part of it this year, part of it next year, or two years down the road. What, and I've been talking with the staff a lot about this in recent weeks, and, and really when I was hired, and we talked a lot about this as well. The idea here is that to keep Leland and Gray a sustainable and desirable location in the state, means that what we have to do is we have to create something here that is unique, that's special, and that continue, we've heard all the successes of alumni, that to continue to prepare kids for everything that happens in the outside world. What the staff and I will be going through in the next, you know, nine to 12 months will be developing where we're going to, a plan for where we're going to be in three to five years. So we're going to be looking for student input, we're going to be looking for parent input, community members' input, board input, central office input, everybody. And we're, we're going to collectively build a vision around where we're going to be. That's what I see as my work in the next nine months, so that when we are sitting next fall with a budget, we may have some hard decisions to make, but we'll have a frame from which to kind of view where we're going to be. And it might not be perfect, it might be a work in progress, but it's, but it's where we have to go. The idea of the downward spiral piece that people have described, I mean, that was, that's a huge fear, and I think for a lot of people, and I think we're going to be smaller, I mean, we're going to have fewer kids. And that means that we, there are certain savings around the economy of scale we're going, going to be able to recognize. But fundamentally, what we need to do is change what we do, but continue to do it in a really high-quality way. So that's, that's what we're going to be working on, that's what the staff and I have talked about, and they're, you know, nervous about the process, I think it's fair to say, because there's a lot of changes and shifts in, in what that means for them professionally, and it's a ton of work, yeah, but I think they're, they're eager to begin, and I think we'll, we'll work together to do that, so.
Yeah, I'd love to hear you say that. I, I really want to give the, the administration this year, or next year, to, to work through that, and with, with bringing in all the, the people that might be impacted, and having them part of the process, and getting more and more people involved, and, and people who have stuff at stake, they might, you know, accept things a little easier if we do it that way, and, and if we're not being reactive on these annual budgets, we're reacting to things that we're being told, instead of making a plan for forward thinking, and that we already have this fixed, we're, we're down with it, we've got it. But I do have a question. Where does the threshold money go? When, when our taxpayers pay over the threshold, what happens to that money and where does it go? Yeah. So, and then what happens to it there? Who gets it?
Any money that goes to the ed fund, and any money that goes into the ed fund gets distributed back out. I just don't know.
Do we see it? I mean, do we?
We won't see it. The ed fund will see it. Everybody will see it.
Goes into the pot, and then it's redistributed out.
It goes into the pot, and then it's redistributed out.
But to whom? All school districts.
All school districts. There's two things that I noticed tonight, sitting here. The first thing is, I'm short-term to this board, I believe this is my third year, this is the first time I have seen the community say that they want to stand up for the budget that is here. They don't want the cuts, they want to fight for the school. The second thing that I've noticed is there was not one person here tonight that complained that their taxes was going to go up. Not one person.
Can I say one thing real quick? I wanted to second, oh, sorry, somebody else.
Hi, I was trying to get the board out of the way before I just, go ahead.
Just real quick, I'd like to reiterate for a second the idea that somebody made over there, that the PR portion, portion of this plan, I think is critical, because there's been a lot of outpouring of sentiment here in support for the school, but I think a lot of it comes from relatives and people who are involved and invested currently or recently in the school. And they know, like I've learned, how brave a place it is, but I think part of the, the plan and the vision that you're talking about has to include marketing or PR, because, you know, a lot of people don't know, and I think when you are up against it, Burn Burton's been mentioned, there's competition out there. In order to, you know, combat that competition, it's going to take some marketing and promotion of the school. I just wanted to second that concept.
So I keep hearing that over the years, there's going to be a decline of students. But there's going to be a decline of students speaking on behalf of my friends and my classmates. If there are funds cut, or if the classes and these programs are cut, we're going to leave. I hate to say that, but we will transfer, and that's just more money leaving the school, that's more students leaving. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to say that throughout, and I'm, I'm not a fan of what was considered of being cut, but I do think that there needs to be cuts, and you made that very clear in order to save the future of the school. But it's very apparent to me where the priorities lie. I don't know if anybody knows this, but this big, beautiful gym that we're all sitting in, it's very nice, it was going to be a theater. And it's not. I just want everybody to consider... I just want everybody to consider looking at cuts in the places where they could possibly fit instead of getting rid of entire programs. I mean, the transportation budget for athletics alone is sixty thousand dollars. I, I just want to say that. That's all I want to say.
I just wanted to say that in terms of, I think that there is more that we could be doing in terms of recruitment. I grew up in South Lunendary, which is a choice town, so we could have chosen to go to Burnburnt, Green Mountain, or Leland and Gray. And back in the day, a long time ago, we were all pretty split. A third of us would go to Burnburnt, a third of us went to Green Mountain, and a third of us came here. And I've noticed in the four years that I've been here, there are so few students from South Lunendary, from Win Hall, from Lunendary. And I think the bulk of kids head over the mountain to Burnburnt. So I think that we can do a better job appealing to the choice towns, whether it's Wordsworth, or Dover, or Marlborough, or Lunendary. And I'm in sort of a unique position because I, my freshman year, my mom moved to Manchester. I'm a Burnburnt kid. My junior year, my mom moved back to Townsend, and I was in a very odd position where I didn't want to leave my friends. It had nothing to do with the quality of school or education, et cetera. I just wanted to not leave my friends. And I commuted from Townsend to Burnburnt. Until my senior year, where it became so ridiculous, I just moved out of my house and moved in with a friend my senior year in high school. My parents couldn't, they didn't attend any of my events. I, I wasn't a part of this community. I wasn't a part of that community. And so I have a concern as a parent raising my kid that I might be putting my kid on a bus over a really scary mountain, you know, to travel almost an hour to school or to head down to Brattleboro where, I mean, if I wanted my kid to go to Brattleboro, I'd move to Brattleboro. So my point being is that we do have an opportunity to get a larger student base. There are choice towns that could be sending to us. They're not sending to us. Why are they not sending to us? And let's take some time as a community to ask those questions and see what we can do to start appealing to the kids in the choice towns. They're out there.
Okay, so we've gotten pretty far afield from the actual motion that we're discussing into how we can make the school better moving forward in the future years.
Yeah, the mic's toast. Now I have, now you just have to.
Voice the battery, then.
We wore out the mic, folks. It's time to quit.
All right, so this has got two more hours, so everybody's good for that, right? All right, so, yes. Okay, go ahead.
I, just to connect to what Jesse said about how this is a gym and it was thought to become a theater area place. Just like he said about the transportation for sports, I'm not really at all, I don't know any, anything really about like economic part of this. But to me, I don't really understand why there's such a big divide between the funds towards sports and towards arts, and why it's so different.
I don't think that we should go into that. Well, okay, if you really want an answer to the question, we could, we could ask the administration to answer that, whether they'd be willing to go there tonight or not. Want to go there?
The reality is that with the number that I was tasked to come up with to make it over the threshold, what I tried to do was to find places where there would be as small of an impact to these things as possible. And we talked about this in an open session before, that there was going to be an impact. Because we were talking about programming at this point. And that I tried to spread out that pain in a variety of areas. Sports was impacted through the snowboarding program. Core subjects were impacted through other areas of science, music. So we have some of the non-core courses there. So we tried to kind of spread it around as a thinking of why there was, someone asked the question, why it seemed like they were disconnected. Well, I was trying to kind of share that pain out through, so that kids, in a variety of ways, would be impacted minimally, but that it would cross-section a bunch of different kinds of programs, which is why they happen that way.
Go ahead, say it.
So I would just like to ask if, well, I had just heard now for the first time that you had already tried to get everything more evened out between everything. But just looking around, I see that a lot of people's specific programs have been affected a little bit more than others. And I heard percents being thrown around in terms of the cuts. So there were some programs getting cut by, what, point eight percent or something like that. And I'm just wondering, are all the programs across the board being cut at the same rate? Or is it only specific programs being cut more than others, as opposed to just giving an equal?
I would say different baseball.
Okay. So this might sound like a ridiculous idea, but couldn't we just do an equal amount of cuts across the board to everything so that no one's specific program is necessarily affected more negatively than another?
I mean, you could take that approach. The challenge to that is that not all programs had equal numbers of kids in it. And so you, you end up hurting more kids in a certain percentage than you would in others. So the attempt was to try to balance in a way that's, that impacts the fewest number of kids in the best possible way, I guess is the best way to really describe it. So that, that's why some of the programs were selected based on small numbers of enrollment, so on and so forth. Or our ability to offer some other type of programming. For example, we talked about French. French wasn't a reduction per se. There was some staffing issues around how we were going to offer French, given the potential for one sabbatical and another staff member who's leaving on her own volition. We have other methods through online learning to be able to offer French to the students. The French won't go away for them. It's going to look very different for them, but it's not going to go away. And the same with music. The idea is with reducing a point eight three wasn't that music's going to go away and there's not going to be a middle school course. The programming would still exist by and large. What we, what, what we would do is we would figure out how to offer it with one person the best we could. And if that meant, for example, maybe no more private lessons, or maybe it would mean no more general music as an exploratory for middle school. Or, you know, try to find places like that that it had a, a smaller impact. And band's going to exist. Course is going to exist. The extracurricular, samba and jazz, those things would all still exist. So you would not, you know, the idea wasn't to eliminate music. It was to, to try to reorganize and impact the smallest number of kids possible, so. I don't know if that answers it or not, but that's, that's the best I can come up with.
Question for Bob. Given the motion is on the table to restore the program betting that ninety-five thousand dollars back, do you believe you can offer the programs that we need for students with the budget that's being voted on now?
I mean, I think there's, I mean, clearly, it was, it was suggested earlier that, by the gentleman who talked about coming in with a zero-based budget. And the idea that you start with what are the needs of a school in order, what do you need in order to function here? What do we, what do we need to educate kids in the best possible way? That's what I was charged to do initially, and that's where we ended up with the initial three point two, three point three percent increase in the budget. Was my attempt to do that and think about what that, what that impact would be. And the other thing that hasn't been mentioned here tonight, and it's not part of the local budget, but the facility is something that the board has been addressing and talking about. And with reductions throughout the years, we've kept staffing levels at the same or increased staffing levels over the recent years, while numbers have dipped at the expense of not putting money into the, to the building and the facilities. The bond a few years back did some renovation in addition to spaces like this and other spaces. But we have significant issues with the physical plan of the building that the community at some point is going to have to figure out how to do, how to deal with. We have a heating system that needs completely to be revamped. Well, just the heating system itself is going to be six hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars.
But you gave us a number you should share.
The number that, that we, when we talked about developing a stewardship plan for all the, the updates that are going to be needed, just for typical wear and tear stuff as well as updating, modernizing some of the facilities so that they're, they're, you know, better looking as well. But even just the basic efficiency elements, we were talking about a stewardship plan that was one point two, one point five million dollars that needs to get invested over the next several years into this building. So this local budget, which we're talking about, and we're, and we're cutting this and we're not cutting this and adding this back in, there's zero money in this budget going into the capital plan, the capital fund to help do that. And that, and that's by design right now. There's not a criticism. Don't take that the wrong way. Because right now, we're working through the process at the board level with the administration of figuring out exactly specifically what that's going to cost, with the hope that by next year, we'll be able to bring you some more specifics and talk about bonds and those kinds of things to, to add more money and increase your taxes again. But, you know, when we talk about, you people talk about that this is a community coming up to support its school. The school isn't just about salaries and benefit packages and programming for kids. There's a physical plant that we need to have. We need to have heat. It's a little cool in here tonight, I might add. There's, there's elements of this that have other costs to just run a building and to put together the programming that, that is something that we're going to, that we're behind the eight ball on as well that we're going to have to address in the coming years while the numbers are dropping for our enrollment. So there's, there's a lot of things going on here. There's a lot of things for us to consider when you think about this. And I'm not suggesting that we keep cutting so that we can do that. I'm just telling you, that's, those are things we have to consider. So to answer your question, Drew, when we're putting this money back in, is it like, yes, we have great programming again? I think there's still stuff that's impactful to kids that could be better. But at some point, we have to decide as a community what's, what's reasonable in it. And the gentleman who talked about the zero-based budget ended, I think, just thinking of the same gentleman, who ended with, and it has to be fiscally responsible. Well, that's the challenge of a board, of any board that you're on. The idea is that you are building quality educational programming for your students. That's your primary objective. Your secondary objective is to do so in a fiscally responsible manner. Sometimes those two things can feel like they're in, you know, fighting against each other. And I think that's what we're talking about right now. So, I mean, I think what, what, Howie's motion is certainly better for kids than where we started the meeting. Yes, I would go on the record segment.
Mr. Carroll, let's call a question.
There's one question I recognized her about, and then you got it.
Laura, you're not going to want to hear this. So based upon the changes that we're talking about, adding this ninety-three five back in, I know you can't do this off the cuff, but at some point, I'm going to be really interested in seeing what that FY nineteen deficit is going to look like.
Five hundred and thirty-three thousand.
So it's just going to simply add the hundred thousand. So next year, we're having this conversation about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Okay, we called the, the question has been called. So the motion is to approve the budget presented to us as draft three on December thirteenth, twenty sixteen, with the addition back in of the music teacher, snowboarding, and tech ed equipment. Am I correct? All right. So that would, so that would make the total budget amount that we are approving six million, three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. I'm getting three nods. I must have. No, there was a clarification that the, the co-op FTD is no longer part of the cuts. No, the only, the cuts then would be an assistant principal, a dean, some sabbaticals, some equipment, and a science teacher, and some security supplies. Okay, so all in favor of that motion, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. We have a budget. Because we are right up against it time-wise, we should come up, we, we need to do our Australian ballot and our warning. We need to adopt them tonight. Now, if I was a really good chair, I'd have copies of these, which I have last year's, but I don't have physical copies. I have a model. So if we read them, can we approve it based on that? You're going to approve dates? Right. Right, we have two warnings. We have an Australian ballot warning and a warning for the twenty-seventeen annual meeting. Gerald?
I just wanted to ask you, if you set this budget as it is now, and if it is not approved by the voters, what is that message to you then? That they want more of a cut, or they want more money put back into the budget? How will you know that?
We won't.
So what?
It's Australian ballot. We won't know. The assumption typically has been that if a budget fails, the budget needs to be cut. And we have, in the past, when our budget failed, ended up cutting it further and having it pass. So.
The, the one thing that could happen is that was organized is exit polling. So, because you can, if people would like to say what, why they voted the way they voted, so you know if something doesn't pass, why it didn't pass. But that would be an organizational thing that people would have to participate in because I don't think the board could guarantee that we'll all be at the exit polls all day on that day.
So, so to do the, so to do the warning, we can, the dates are going to be February, February seventh at seven P M. Is the annual meeting warning, right? I have the annual meeting warning, so it would be that the legal, legal voters of Leland and Gray in District High School Thirty-four comprising the towns of New Haven, Jamaica, towns of London and Port Royal are warned to meet February seventh, twenty seventeen, at seven thirty to act on the following articles. And then we would just adjust the dates and the articles that we've had from last year to elect a moderator, to elect a clerk, and it would be July one, twenty seventeen to June third, twenty eighteen, to elect a treasurer, to compensate the directors, four hundred, the chair, five hundred, and the treasurer, five hundred. And then the, do we want to change the date of the annual meeting for the district at that point? We don't have that information to change that one yet? Okay. So that would be the first Tuesday of February of twenty eighteen. And then Article, Article six would be to conduct a public information hearing on the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen Leland and Gray budget, which is to be established February seventh by Australian ballot. And the school, the expenditure would be the number that we read earlier. February seventh. I'm sorry, February eighth is the vote. And the, the number for the budget is six million, three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. We're supposed to put in this warning that that will result in education spending of blank per pupil, per equalized pupil, and that that's X percent higher or lower than the previous year?
We can add.
We can add that? Do we have a rough guess of the equalized per pupil spending number and the percentage up it is?
Okay, with the being above the spending threshold, the total per pupil is nineteen thousand, one ninety-three, up from sixteen, six one one.
Nineteen thousand, one ninety-three?
That's with, including the penalty.
And that's, we have to say what the percentage higher is, but we can, I mean, we don't have to know it now. Okay. Well, we can do this and then we can do the Australian ballot.
Sixteen percent.
Sixteen percent?
Up sixteen.
Up sixteen percent. Okay. Okay, so that's the, that's the annual meeting warning. Can we do the Australian ballot? Can we do the Australian ballot warning quick and then vote on a vote? Okay. So, that, that's the same, we just talked about, that there, that people are warned to go to the polls on February 8th. And then the, the only, we talked about the poll open hours, which stay the same. And then the article is the exact same language that we just put in. It's Article, Article 6 becomes Article 1. They're dated, they're dated whatever, when we sign them. So, they'll be dated December 20th, in 2016.
I think we did last year this way. We waited, because we had to make sure, well, we had to make sure the numbers were correct.
Okay.
So, we can date them when she's done the numbers.
Okay. So, once those numbers are, once those numbers are actually ready to go, we can insert them in these warnings, and we can come in and sign them, and as long as it's in the 30 to 40-day window, we're good. Right? Well, we can, we can insert the right numbers at some point, as long as we're in the 30 to 40-day, we can approve everything tonight, and then finalize the numbers and sign them, as long as we're in the window.
That would be better.
That would be.
He just has to have a date of when he signs it.
Yeah, because of the exclusion.
You got to sign by the 22nd.
I'm not excluding.
So, I got to sign by Friday. No, Thursday. Okay, so by Thursday, we have to have it, we'll sign them on Thursday. So, does everybody, like, you went through this in your head, but do we have enough sense that we can actually vote to approve those warnings? So, we just need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the warning.
Alright, Drew moved it. Abby can take it, Ally gets the second. The motion is to approve the annual meeting warning and the Australian ballot warning, as we just discussed.
Who moved?
Drew. Ally seconded. And then Howie seconded as well. I'll, I'll give you the exact wording, Peter, of the warnings. Okay, any discussion on those? Alright, all in favor of approving the warnings as, as discussed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Alright, any other business we have to discuss, folks? Just one more motion, please.
Make a motion with John.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.